Good afternoon, our work session is called to order and of course our, the only order of business for this afternoon, of course, is the, is the budget discussion. We've had two hearings and last being, of course, last Wednesday where we received an update from Dr. Thornton on revenues, revenue and expenditures. We also in possession of the superintendent's proposed budget. The way we will proceed this afternoon, of course, the superintendent will offer opening remarks relative to the budget and will present the chief of operations so that we can get an update, an overview on the facts as they stand today and then we will continue our discussion from there on, as to what steps we take next and that, that discussion should begin after Dr. Thornton with what we want to target for success. That, that should drive our, our conversation. All right, Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, staff and guests. Of course, we've taken the time to work to build a budget that is reflective of the needs for our students and staff, especially centered on moving student achievement forward. So, the budget that has been recommended to you as a reminder is reflective of that to, with the intent of ensuring that we have the essentials that are necessary for our staff, being it certified, classified, support staff, also for the needs of our students and student achievement. And so with that, you are aware that we also have what we refer to as a budget gap. And so I ask the team to come together as we typically do to do further review, to try to ensure that we have dotted all i's and crossed all t's and, but with the intent of pinpointing other budget balancing strategies to try to get that gap reduced as much as possible without impacting the bottom line for us. And I feel that the team has done so and I'd like to commend all that, including the budget committee as well as cabinet, as well as school level officials that worked on that budget team to get us to the point that we are, we are today. So you have before you a document that is reflective of some changes, recommended changes as it relates to the balancing process. It did impact to a certain degree the budget gap. You have the projected adjustments as it relates to the base revenue as well as expenditures and then we're going to attempt to expound upon the balancing strategies to, to, and, and with the intent of getting us to see our revenues and our, and our expenditures balanced. With that said, I will defer to our chief operating officer, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Dr. King. Chairman Houston, school board members, good afternoon. You have at your place a one-page document that again is intended to summarize for the board the initial budget proposal with changes as well as reflecting the budget gap as we've referred to it. But since that time, as Dr. King has mentioned, we have as a cabinet going back and reflect for you the recommended adjustments to the originally proposed budget that was presented to you on February the 11th. So the document that you have that's displayed and the, and the one pager that you have reflects those major revenue and expenditure categories, changes if you will, additions and reductions, the proposed as well as recommended adjustments that are shaded going horizontally and then the adjusted revenues and expenditures based on those recommendations. So the bottom, starting with the bottom line and then working our way through some of the detail as the board pleases, the, as you will recall, on February the 11th, our originally proposed budget reflected a budget gap of $8.84 million. And what that means simply is that our recommended expenditures for FY 16 exceeded our estimated revenues. So in order to balance that gap, we would need additional revenues or continue to go and make some additional adjustments on the expenditure side. So again, on February the 11th, the proposed budget gap was 8.8 million. Since that time, as we shared with the board last week during the work session, since that time the general assembly has concluded its budget session for this year and in doing so it increased funding as relates to Norfolk Public Schools and many other school divisions around the Commonwealth. It increased funding for Norfolk Public Schools. We saw an increase of 1.64 million. And that primarily reflects the general assembly funding the state share of a 1.5% salary increase for SOQ covered positions. Again, shared some of that with you last week. The second item, that adjustment that is driven off of general assembly action is on the expenditure side of the budget for us and that's where the general assembly lowered the funded VRS rate so we in turn as the employer could lower our VRS projected cost for next year and that's an estimated 739,000. So those are the two state-driven adjustments. The other adjustments that you have reflected here in the column in the middle headed, titled recommended adjustments total about 2.1 million. So I'm kind of going high level and then we can go into the details. So the bottom line is that the 8.8 million original proposed gap has now been reduced by 4.3 million, a combination of state action as well as some other recommended adjustments that we would share with the board today, bringing the, the total adjusted gap to 4.5 million. So roughly it, we've, we've cut it in half at this point and I'd be happy to walk the board through those specific adjustments and then whatever other questions the board has, myself, of course, Dr. King and other members of cabinet are here to address as needed. Okay? All right. So again, unless there are specific questions around the state revenue adjustment, I'll, I'll move past that one. Any question, yes?
Just when you mentioned the 1.4% that the state provided for SOQ funded positions and I know later on in your balancing box you addressed non-SOQ staffing. If either here or somewhere along the way, you can point out some, remind us of some of the non-SOQ positions beyond instructional support positions.
Okay, yes.
Just to get a better understanding of that.
Just to highlight for the board those areas or categories that have recommended adjustments. All right, so again, unless there are specific questions around the state revenue adjustment, but staying within the revenue category, that first box there, that section, the, the other highlighted area would be reappropriation of prior year carry forward of fund balance FY 2014. The original proposed budget had us utilizing $3 million in prior year fund balance. The total prior year fund balance as audited by our audit firm as of June 30, 2014 is So at this point, we would recommend pretty much exhausting that full 3.4 million. The original proposal was just 303 million, but now at this point, we would just recommend go ahead and exhausting the full 3.4 million. Any questions on that? So that is a revenue adjustment.
That's a one-time.
That's a one-time revenue source again. But it, but it also, the, so the total one-time revenue that we're presenting as of today would be 3.4 million. Obviously, we shared with the board over the last couple of years that that's not a long-term strategy, but we are again trying to wean ourselves off of that. Two years ago, I think it was 7.8 million. This current year that we're in now, it's 5.9 million. Next year, the proposal is for 3.4 million, basically because we don't have any other one-time revenues to put towards it and again, it forces us to, not to depend on that as a long-term strategy. So the bottom line is our revenue would increase by $2 million, not reflecting the gap, of course. Any other questions on revenue? On expenditures, beginning with the adjustments and then if board members have other questions, the transportation of homeless students per McKinney-Vento Act, of course, that's the federal act that requires that we provide educational services to children that, that qualify under the homeless act. We had originally proposed to adjust the base budget to account for what is roughly a 250 to 300,000 annual cost to Norfolk Public Schools to transport our children that are considered to be in homeless status. We contract with an outside carrier service for that. So what we have done basically within other budgets, we've just pulled money from other places during the year to cover that. What we were attempting to do in the original proposal was to build it into the base budget, knowing that it's probably going to be an annual recurring cost and it will likely do so. But at this point, we're going to take it out of the transportation budget, pretty much in gasoline savings because gasoline prices have gone down even though it's market-driven and it's subject to go back up. But at this point, to avoid, to close that gap at this point, we would recommend that we not put it as an addition to the base budget, but that we would continue to pull it from other sources, particularly gasoline savings. Questions?
Have you looked at an alternative way of transporting the students or is that the most cost-effective way of doing it?
At this point, I wouldn't say it's the most cost-effective way. It's, we, we don't have the assets and the capacity to transport them using our own yellow school bus service, so we have had to contract out. But we could look to see if there are other opportunities to partner perhaps with other school divisions to determine what city they live in, but all in keeping with the law.
How many students are we talking about?
It would be an uninformed guess to say a couple hundred, a couple hundred.
King, I thought you mentioned a number of about 300 at some point a few months ago.
Right, homeless numbers, but when you, when you look at the transportation piece, you have to transport across lines and so sometimes it doesn't include that entire group.
When you say across lines?
I mean, you know, so some, I think, you know, there are examples of having to transport students from Norfolk to Virginia Beach, for example, because the law requires that if that's their homestead, so to speak, but they're homeless and maybe they're doubled up with families here, then if the request is there, then we must transport them to the, the other location by law.
So by law, we, we transport those students from Norfolk to another locality.
In some cases, yes, sir.
But mostly from other localities then to Norfolk because we're providing the services. The educational service.
Well, that makes more sense to me actually.
So it, it can be anywhere from 200 to 300. The other area that's highlighted, it shouldn't be highlighted at this point where it says other operating cost adjustments, so disregard that highlight, please. And if the board is interested, what that includes is we had to adjust for government school cost increases, just regular inflation-driven, VPSA backpack, state backpack, technology initiative, local match, athletics, needed some additional support, our property casualty insurances, premiums, some bank fees and then retiree health premium subsidy, total of about 774,000.
Can I just ask a question regarding a non-highlighted, but the strategic plan, transformation initiatives, AVID, IB, dual and credit. Are those priorities for this year as it relates to year three of the strategic plan and that's why they're in there?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the needs for those initiatives under the strategic plan. Gotcha, okay.
And we're still working with Mr. Smiegel, principal of the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood around his IB needs, so we've got a meeting scheduled with him week after next to finalize, to make sure we're clear on what his year one IB needs are.
So it just kind of gets to a question I was going to have later and that is, does our base budget include all that we need to execute on year three of strategic plan, including the transformation initiatives of the academy, of open campus, of the four reconfigured schools and potentially what would come out of the DeJean Richter recommendations that might impact 15, 16?
Do you feel that it does? Of course, you know, we're, have at least one, two other sessions with the young Richter, but much of it centers on taking a look at things that are in the future, not necessarily this particular budget and so the long-term, so we feel like we've done a pretty good job of projecting based on what we know, so, yes.
Continuing with the final two adjustments, in the next box where there's several lines, rebasing of FY 15 compensation budget, turnover slash attrition savings. The original amount was 3.3 million and that was based on our projections of compensation as of December 31, 2014 and throughout the budget process, you may recall last year leading up to final approval, we were adjusting our recommendation in that area. And the idea here again is that we're not in a position to carry any additional funds in our salary and benefit lines. This does not result in reducing the number of staff, but it's just recalculating what it will cost based on our current staffing levels, who's in those positions, where they are on the salary scales that will drive the cost estimate for the next year. So we had another month of payroll, so we, we take advantage of both January and February's payroll to refine that estimate. And you'll recall that 85% of our budget is in salaries and benefits. So this total of 4.5 represents approximately 1.5% of our total compensation base.
Say that again?
The 4.5 million, which is the total amount after the adjustment, represents about 1.5% of our total compensation base. Our compensation base is about 270 million.
You said it represents 1%.
About 1.5%, little more than 1.5%. But again, this does not reduce the number of staff in any way. This is just refining the cost. This is a standard practice. And then the next, yes, sir? The next highlighted item for recommended adjustment would be, as I mentioned earlier, the reduced VRS costs based on the general assembly action to lower the contribution, employer contribution rate. This does not pass on any additional cost to employees, but it lowers Norfolk Public Schools and all of the other participating school divisions' rate by just under 1%, 1 percentage point.
Where you have the rebasing of the FY 15 compensation budget, turnover, attrition savings and the adjustment was 1.2 on here. Does that 1.2 suggest, is this a typical adjustment that, that we're talking about here? We're not looking at an attrition rate that would be any higher than?
No, it's based on our, it's based on our, pretty much our last two to three-year trends. So any given year, we may have 2, 2.5, maybe 3% attrition rate, meaning that that 270 million compensation budget, which includes benefits, can be anywhere from 2% to 2.5% a year attrition and that's obviously when we build a budget now, we're building it on X number of staff at a salary value of Y. When you have turnover, 200 to 300 staff members a year perhaps, particularly in, in the teacher ranks where the bulk of our staff reside or employed and, you know, if the trend is that we start seeing retirees, of course, then when we are replacing them, the market pretty much at this point seems to dictate that we're bringing in unfortunately, less experienced teachers, but hopefully highly effective or to become highly effective, put it that way. Is that fair from HR colleagues? Is that fair?
Certainly, we strive for 100% highly qualified, but based on experience, yes.
Second question concerns the targeted reductions resulting from program evaluation process. Could you explain the?
So we went through, I'll kind of go high level and then if Dr. Bailey wants to chime in from a technical aspect, she'll do that. So one of the charges of the team was to go in and do some, and we shared with the board that we do some targeted program review. I think the goal has been over the last few years to do some evaluation, but quite honestly, as you, as you know, we didn't have the resources to do a full-blown evaluation nor the benefit of time to do it. So we did some targeted reviews among those where we looked at instructional software programs, but we also looked at some other programs that have people tied to them. Program evaluation isn't limited to just software, but in this case, the recommendation that values a reduction of 345,000 is focused on two of our instructional support programs, software programs. I don't know if we want to mention it at this point in time specifically who those vendors are because they're existing programs, but because of negotiations, some other things, but it's related, these are related to software programs that we can reduce the number of subscriptions for it based on an analysis of the usage levels and what we deem to be the impact that it's had on student performance and in this case, teaching and learning. Dr. Bailey, anything?
That's correct. We looked at several and like Dr. Thornton said, we did look at usage and then student outcomes as measured by our SOQ.
I think that's a really great point. The board had asked about that, people in the community have asked about that. Is this done yearly?
It should, it should be done yearly, different, ideally if Dr. Bailey had the team in place and if any school division had a team in place, then they would have a calendar to identify on a, on a, on a cycle basis, which programs would be reviewed on an annual cycle, every two years, every three years, every four years, every five years, depending upon what the evaluation criteria are in measurement.
Right, what we try to do based on the board requests, we will then go in and take a look or a review at programs of your interest and then report back. And so in prior years, that has been a limited number, not a full scale, because we're not, certainly staffed to do full-scale program evaluations.
Other specific questions? With the adjustments, yes.
I just stayed on that subject then, maybe what would be nice to hear is what a budget would look like to have increased the staff to be able to do that on a continuous basis if they could save us enough money to pay for the salary of the staff, it might be worth looking into.
So I have some concerns, I'd just like for you all to alleviate them or validate them if you would. So when we have discussions around what we need to help our children learn, you know, talk about more time, we talk about teacher quality and we talk about supports for teachers in the, in the classroom. So, and Dr. Thornton has tried to explain this to me numerous times and I'm just going to ask him to help me one more time. So we talk about savings through turnover and attrition. So if as a district, we say that one of the things that could be helpful for our children is if we have highly effective, experienced staff and then through attrition, we lose highly effective seasoned staff, not saying all are, I don't know what the numbers are, but for the sake of argument, let's assume that they all are. Why would we, if a teacher wanted to stay, why would we not look for ways to try to incent, whether it's through practices or whether it's through finances? Why wouldn't we be trying to keep every good, effective teacher that we have? Calculate the cost of what it does to do that and then tell the public and tell the council what that is, why it's needed and what the benefit would be thereof versus, in my view, continuing down a path where we don't qualify in terms of people and outcomes, but we do address it in terms of calculations and numbers. If, if, if at the end of the day, the people make the difference, why can't we have a discussion about the people that we need, at the quality that we need, at the cost that we think is going to occur? Say what that is and then have a honest and open discussion about how do we get there? And if there's not enough money to get there, then we know it's not enough money to get there. Cause I would think that we want to try to save as many highly effective teachers as we have. We want to have as small of a pupre teacher ratio as we could have if the research tells us that that is effective. And anything else, we have talked about the impact that support positions or the difference that they can make in the classroom. We've talked about the difference that ITRTs can make in the classroom. We recognize that there's a cost associated with it. I just feel like we still are not truly qualitatively describing what we need to have as a district and then quantifying what that number is and then making cuts versus just doing it mathematically. Now if you all are doing that internally, I just want you to share it. But if it's, if it's a combination of the pressure of the finances and the weight that's required to describe it in qualitative terms, I just can't, I can't vote for a budget that doesn't tell me the outcomes and the impact of what we're talking about.
So I think having the benefit of having sidebar conversations around this, as you mentioned, what we're projecting here is the result of our current reality that from one year to the next, because of our separation when teachers leave, whatever their experience level is, drives the cost of that position. When we replace them, then the trend has been that who we are attracting is at a lower cost because of where their placement would be on the scale, which is experience-driven. So what we're doing here is not intended to dictate that practice, but just to recalculate the cost as a result of that reality. But your question, I think, is centered around what can we do from a retention standpoint strategically to try to avoid having this reality? Is that?
Yes. Because if we... Maybe I'll ask another question related to that. Of the attrition that we had last year, what percentage of teachers would you say that we lost for whatever reason were highly effective? And so, if, if you know that number, then to me, that was some loss. We hired some new teachers. They may also be highly effective, but there may be some gaps. But if there's, if there is a gap, then how do we go about the business of closing and eliminating the gap versus either sustaining the gap or seeing the gap grow? Somehow, if there's some way of determining that, I'd like for you to tell me. If there's no way of determining that, then, you know, that's, that's an entirely different subject.
A couple of items that I think are important, and I'm sure that our human resources representatives would like to weigh in on that, but we know that, and have had transparent conversations within principals' meetings, et cetera, that one main ingredient in this whole process centers on effective leadership. Thus, the reason we entered into the whole planning process and adopted a rollout for one hundred percent of our principals to work to become more effective, in some cases even more effective, because, you know, you know, many times leaders are at different ends of the spectrum. So, we know that many times highly effective teachers stay because of that leadership. And so, what we have begun to work to do is to try to impart and roll out those modules that help principals hone the skills that are necessary to ensure that those teachers want to stay, even in, in, in what we consider highly challenging environments and settings. And, and people define those in different ways. And so, when we look at high-poverty environments, research is clear around what the tenants of, that connect to leadership really center on for teachers to really want to stay. That's why you hear us talk about the four to eight-week snapshots and how to do that. If those are not rolled out with fidelity and, and clear and with clarity and consistency so that teachers understand how to remove something else from the plate and replace it with X, then it could be frustrating to teachers when it's, it appears that you are adding to what's already there, if you don't know what to effectively remove, if that makes sense. And so, that's what these modules are designed to do. So, long answer to your questions, response to your questions centers on the fact that we have to continue to build more and more effective leaders at the building level, more and more effectiveness at the central level that can model that as well. So, you know, that's, that's inclusive of everybody. I think that's extreme, that's, that is of vital importance. And then when we have the positions that we already have in the schools that are designed to model great teaching, that we're utilizing that to the highest level as a support piece too. And so, by building the training modules for principals, it, it, it helps to ensure that principals know how to use those positions, because we have those positions in the schools. How do you send them in to help support teachers? So, the coaching mechanism, all those things, those are things outside of the incentives and money that really allow us to retain, or begin to retain teachers at a higher level. The last thing I'll say, and then I'll defer to human resources department and anybody else that wants to, to weigh in on this, is that part of the strategic plan really centers on changing the whole phenomena of losing students each year. And so, on the average, you know, we've lost a couple of hundred students plus each year. Well, that's a negative. When that happens, however, then it reduces your allotment in terms of, of, yes, yes. And so, some of what you see in the budget is reflective of the fact that through projections, you're only project, you're projecting X amount of reduction in students. Therefore, you, you're not hiring as many teachers, and when people leave, theoretically, you're not having to replace them all, if you follow me. But still keeping with the ratios, but that's because students are leaving. And so, the strategic plan is designed to stop that. So, as that happens, then that shouldn't appear in, in, in the budget cycle as a, as an item that impacts your budget. So, I think that's something that the board needs to remember as well, as we see some of these things begin to change, because we feel as if tho, those, those numbers averaging between two to three hundred at some point will begin to subside. Anything outside of that with human resources?
I think something that we would like to add, Dr. King mentioned the leadership piece, and certainly that's very critical to teachers being retained at the, the school level, at the school level. Another interesting area that we've discussed time and time again is the support piece. The majority of our teacher corps is comprised of teachers between zero and five years of experience, so they're going to need support. They're going to need an in-house mentor, they're going to need a central office administrator and mentor, they're going to need professional development opportunities throughout the school year. So, these are things that we have to make sure that we're on top of in providing to our teachers. And then if we don't do so, then some of them do decide that, you know, the grass is greener on the other side.
If you're telling me that the budget that you're presenting is supporting and helpful to that, it's neutral to that, or it's harmful to that? If it's harmful to that, I want you to tell me. And if it's helpful to that, I want you to, to tell me, because I just want to make sure that we're providing whatever we can to support it. So, just one more related to that. So, these, these non-SOQ staffing instructional support positions, they are what specifically?
At this point in time, we've talked about, a prime example would be reading and math specialists. The initiative that we put in place two years ago, where we were doing one reading, one math for each of our elementary and middle school comprehensive programs. That's an example of what we've done at the local level that is not SOQ-funded.
So, is this representative, then, of potentially losing ten of those individuals? Is that what, potentially?
That's something we've discussed.
Okay. So, let's, can I use that as an example? So, we've had conversations around having one in each school may be a good thing, but data may suggest that there are some schools that may need to double or triple up.
Some may not need it. I'm just saying, I don't know.
Perhaps, right. But I'm just, right. But if we have acknowledged that we think that there are some that need more, and we are proposing a budget that eliminates ten, how is that a good thing? Is what, is where I'm trying to get to. Should, should that not be, if that's a priority, and if we think that it has impact, you all have to tell me that in terms of effectiveness, but I can tell you that when we did the math and reading specialist, and we put back the additional, what do you call it? That and the folks in the office, the SDS or whatever, without any data, but just from feeling, I've heard that that's been a positive thing. So, if it's a good thing, shouldn't we try to keep it? If it's not a good thing, then, you know, talk to me about it.
So, two things. One, I do feel that this budget reflects support for the focus on continuing the training and professional learning that's necessary to, 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 to continue to build highly effective leaders. Because we, we, we started that module back in, what, October? I think it was, so we have a series of trainings that will continue through and into the following school year. So, then it is inclusive of that, which really, once we reach fidelity of implementation, it also has an impact on the effective teacher, highly effective teacher. So, it, this does reflect that. The second item that I'll mention centers on your, your question around the eighty positions, I think it was initially. We developed a committee, a subcommittee, to take a look at that, to determine, yes, that's impactful, yes, it impacts student achievement, however, we do have schools that are different. And we talked about how do you differentiate your application of services based on that, whether it's school need, in addition to school size, and a number of indicators. And so, that's why you see what you see here, but so from there, I'll ask Ms. Campson to talk a little bit about that discussion, if you, if you will, please.
The committee looked at this and tried to figure out what would be the fairest way. Indeed, we had to make this very challenging cut. And so, they wanted to be looking at equity as opposed to equal, which is what we have now equal. And so, what we did is we started with school size, and we looked at our smallest schools, the ones that have, the ones that have three hundred and seventy-five students or less, that's where we started. Then we looked at, they're pretty close together, close proximity if you're going to be sharing. And then we looked at academic and socioeconomic challenges, especially academics. And so, academically, we looked at priority schools. They certainly need every single bit of help they can get. We looked at the focus schools. We looked at third-year warrant schools. We looked at conditionally criticals. We looked at all of those schools, and we, and some of those schools fell into those smaller numbers, but we took them off the board. And so, with the school, that's why we didn't quite get to ten. And so, with the schools that were left, we did, after having taken that, that was our, our formula for choosing the schools to look at was under three hundred and seventy-five students. Some that were close together, tried to match them as close as possible, in case a shared person was splitting a day. And we looked at, once again, eliminating the ones that have the, the big struggles with academics. And so, we came up with this, as this was the recommendation, to pair Fair Lawn and Parkland Halls. And this would mean that one reading specialist and one math specialist would be assigned to the pair, and they would share this, Camp Allen and Harleton, and Gant and Taylor. And then we have a pairing that's a little bit different from that protocol. We will repair Ocean View and Willoughby. And the reason we did that, Ocean View, of course, highly exceeds that three hundred and seventy-five, but next year, we'll start, the stools are probably, and it's being proposed, being blended, Willoughby only has a hundred and fifty-three students as of March. These were based on the March, March enrollments, only has, of those, if indeed the third, fourth, and fifth grade move on to Ocean View, sixty-five or so of those kids will be moving over, and they'll just have a handful of students left there, and the schools are, of course, right here. And so, that's why, in, in trying to get to the number eight, that we did address Ocean View because of the closeness of Willoughby and how Willoughby's population is so, so large. That's basically what came up, how the committee came up. We could not find any other pairings that matched that criteria that we had set, and that's why we ended up with eight instead of ten.
And so, that does reflect one hundred percent service across each school, however.
Well, every school will get service, yes. They will be receiving service, they will be sharing.
And I'll, I'll yield from this, but I just wanted, what I heard Ms. Campson say is she started with the, or you all started with the position that we needed to save the money, right? And then based...
That was the charge that we were giving.
And then based upon that, you did this analysis.
Yes, that was, that was the charge.
And I'm saying that I thought, I'm not saying that's wrong, because you all have to do what you have to do. I'm saying it's from a board's perspective, we had, we had talked about trying to save what we thought was going to have the most academic impact. And I would just add that as we consider our final recommendation, that if there's something else that perhaps we need to shift, or frankly, just ask for what we need, make the argument, I would like for us to be in a position to do that if we have the data to support it.
Sure.
Along the same lines, with this topic in particular, with the teacher reductions and non-SOQ staffing, does that include any staff members from our specialty programs? For example, international bachelorette or medical sciences? Young scholars? So, so we wouldn't be decreasing our ability to offer German five or?
Not based on any staffing reductions under this category, no.
Under this category? Okay.
Now, of course, if enrollment dictates, you know, if there's only two or three kids, then we may have to do some alternative to address their need, but it won't be because of this category of reduction.
Okay.
A recommended production, reduction.
And then I am one hundred percent in agreement with Mr. Jordan's line of thinking and trying to advocate on behalf of what's going to push us academically versus a bottom-dollar approach. And along that same line of thinking, not just considering what do we need academically to keep the students at their highest potential and the teachers at their highest potential, but can we get to a point where we have a budget that reflects one that would support an increase in the ADM, the average daily membership? And Dr. King, you alluded to the strategic plan, already having mechanisms in place to do that. Does this budget reflect within it items to support those plans in the strategic plan in order to do that, in order to bring students on versus dissuade them or decrease the amount of loss that we're seeing?
For this fiscal year, for this budget, yes. Looking forward, we would have to continue to, to project, which for me means watch the numbers that are growing and changing as they begin to do so. I think our new academy, the Choice School, is a, is a prime example. It will allow us to begin to build a trend study analysis process to determine how we are attracting back students, because I think we're at in excess of one thousand requests in that particular school already. And so, what we have begun, we've begun to do is taking a look at where are these students coming from, you know, within some of those students, the students that are not currently enrolled in Norfolk, but they reside in Norfolk. So, that allows us to begin to project and build that into the budget as we see that happens.
Pretty much gets it. Once we get that historical trend of an increased enrollment or not declining at the same rate, that's important too, then that'll be factored into our revenue and staffing projections going forward.
So, if I, if I'm accurate to, to do that, what, what is the exact figure if we do the full ten different than what the eight will represent? I think I saw that somewhere, I think I'm overlooking it.
The full ten...
It'll, it'll increase our budget gap, a certain amount, not a necessarily huge amount.
Right now, we're still, we're showing that the ten at a value of six fifty.
Six fifty, right.
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Stewart?
You've heard it before, Dr. King. As a matter of fact, it's something you told me three years ago. The theme is show me the time, not show me the money, because I know we've been told that we don't have standing, but the theme is show me the time. Most important in student learning, I believe, is the teacher. Second most important according to educational research and recent turnaround principles is time. Educational research time says, research says it, everyone knows it's true. And Dr. King, when you arrived, you said, I want more time, more parental involvement, and more partners. In your original proposals, that's what you were working towards. The time isn't necessarily pre-Labor Day, although that would have been nice, and it still can be nice, but there are many other options. This is never going to be reflected in this kind of presentation, Dr. Thornton, which is well-done and always well-crafted with you, with Dr. King, with your whole colleague group. But it can be given to me offline in a presentation individually, because as my tenure ends as school board member, I want to make sure that this is something that Norfolk Public Schools has as its agenda. And, and so, I go back. We started out, we start out in the hole this year, and what you're doing is amazing to try and work with that situation. This is the first year the state has kept us from falling further in the hole. In my time on the board, and I think Dr. Houston's time previous to that, the state has deserted us. In my time on the board, and I think Dr. Houston's time previous to that, the state has deserted us. The federal government has reduced us, and the city council has come to our rescue. And I'm grateful for that. But this is the first year it hasn't. As a matter of fact, the pilot says this very clearly. Despite the additional funds devoted to public K-12 education, state spending per pupil won't return to where it was in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And that's disappointing fact, it's just a fact. So, we're in difficult circumstance, and I know that. But if there is a need to ask the city for additional funds, I want you to tell us that's so. Let me tell you what, what may be the situation that it won't require that. More time can be found in daily time. We now know that we're adding ten minutes per day. I've asked Mr. Cloud to investigate the spirit of this. Could this be something done for next year as a whole, not just to make up snow time? It's been done in other school systems throughout the state, throughout the country. We know that we have a pre-Labor Day start, we have a pilot project, perhaps it will go this year, and that can happen. But wonderful analysis has begun here where I have, and I'm going to focus on elementary school. Where we have twenty-three schools that have after-school programs, five have Saturday school. It could be that we could add using titled funds, using granted funds, use a, a number of opportunities. But it could be that we need an item in the budget for next year to say, we're trying everything we can. We're adding a little bit more time to each school day. We've got a pilot project for pre-Labor Day, perhaps we'll go more pre-Labor Day. Perhaps we, our title funds can be spent better. Perhaps all the things that we can do, we're going to show Dr. Warren Stewart before he leaves, more time. But it could be we need to ask for more time. And remember, three years ago, we were in a situation where, in a bad depression, the city found more money for the reading and math votes, and that was wise. But more time is critical. I want you to tell me, and it doesn't, can't come in this format. It's got to come where you say, yes, we've looked at every possible element. Yes, we've looked at the wonderful analysis that we have to begin this year. But more time, I think, is critical. Do we need to have an item where we tell the city, this is what we need for more time, particularly for these schools in the greatest need? And I, and I, I can tell you that the language of teaching and learning has been standardized to our benefit in the city of Norfolk for the past few years. Principals' salaries are superlative. Gives us the opportunity for that instructional leader to be most helpful to good teachers and helping all teachers. And we have principal training. Many things have happened, but I need to see that there's more time for the most needy students in those schools that most need it. I need to see that personally before I end my tenure. And if this requires an individual presentation to me, I'd be pleased to do that. Again, I know you're trying, and I know you're working within the constraints. But if there is a need to, for an item to the city, then I'd like to advocate for that. And I don't think it's going to come in this format. And I, and I'm, Dr. King, I respectfully request this individualization. And you know what? I know I'm preaching to the choir, because I already know you know that. Thank you for listening.
All right?
Yes.
So, two questions. Could you help me understand where the realignment of the elementary and secondary twelve-point-oh kind of FTEs are going to come from? And does that impact pupil teacher ratio?
The expectation is that because of our continued declining enrollment, that these six at the elementary level across thirty schools, roughly thirty-three schools, and the six across the middle schools and the high schools will not impact class size. It will not raise class size. Once we get the final enrollment projections by grade and school, then at the, at the elementary level, then we will basically make those adjustments to the class size. We do that every year, pretty much right up through the September thirty fall membership. But we'll do that probably within the next three or four weeks to finalize that elementary to see where we need to make FTE adjustments based on enrollment to stay within our class size initiatives. And then at the secondary, particularly at the high school level, it's going to be driven by what course selections kids are making. And I think that, are they in the process now, or they'll do it shortly after spring break, or?
The, the students have actually done their course selections. So, what we're doing now is compiling that so that we can create how many sections of what course we need. So, that's what's in the process right now.
Oh, thank you. And then, secondly, it concerns me about the ten FTEs as it relates to the non-SOQ staffing, which could be the reading or math specialist. Because it was two years ago, the city council said, we're going to give you additional funding, forty, forty, because there's been an identified need in the division. And I would hate to technically just start dismantling that. When it was an identified need, city council stepped up and said, yes, we will support that, that's a good initiative. And we know that it is working within the schools. Anecdotally, to your point, dated to come, but anecdotally very strong. And we know we have reading issues within our division. Dr. King, you've been saying that for years, and that's why you've reconfigured some of the elementaries. So, I personally would not advocate for us getting rid of any of the reading and math specialists. It was an identified need. The city stepped up and funded it, and I would hate to dismantle it for one of our cost-saving measures. Another point I'd like to make is, and I speak to the board on this one, is that I would prefer that, at the end of the day, whenever we land on a final budget, we do identify what our priorities are. So that if we don't end up getting, in this world, four-point-five million in addition, let's just say we get two million. What are the priorities so that we would know what to identify the two million needs to be applied to? Because we need to walk out of here at some point, very clearly articulate to our community, to city council, to teachers, principals, whomever, what our priorities are for the additional needs. Last year, I think we were a little weak on that, to be perfectly honest. I think we could have done a better job of identifying those priorities. And I say that as we're here, I think we, we need to be better and clearer in terms of identifying our priorities. So, and then again, I'll just reiterate that I appreciate the fact that you're putting the money in there to keep those transformation initiatives and the strategic plan moving forward, because you're absolutely right, those have got to be successful. I know I've said this before, those reconfigured schools, Lakewood, Open Campus, in the future DeJohn Richter decisions, those are key to keeping this transformation initiative, and we can't shortchange them in any way. We've got to come out of the gate strong. And you've mentioned, Dr. King, the strong application at the academy for discovery. So, we need to really keep that momentum going. So, and then I would just like to say, Dr. King and Dr. Thornton and team, I know, Dr. Thornton, you have a huge team, but not huge. You have a very talented team working with you that puts this together. And I appreciate all the work that you guys have done in doing that.
Here's Rondi. Principal people right there, Rondi.
Right, it's not, just a few, I know, there's only a few of you guys.
I, I, I know that it's been said, stated already, but I'm just going to just add to it again. Fully funding the transformation initiative, one hundred percent agree. And that is, I know that you are all are forward-thinking. We have a couple of schools that are going to be applying for their pre-IB status, a couple of the elementary schools. And with those applications, as I understand it, there are certain courses that children have to take. And although we may not have the students to fill those courses, there are courses that have to be there in order to have the curriculum, in order to apply for that status. So, I just want to make sure that we're planning in advance to say, well, even if we don't have necessarily, you know, twenty seats, twenty children in the class, we can still offer that class and still apply for that status. So.
Dr. Stewart? So, touchy subject and probably not a very popular thing based upon talking about it before in the past. So, at the end of last year, when we were dealing with professional development and gifted teachers and so on, we ended up taking a hit, whatever it was, one point something, one million or so.
Million one, million two.
What was it?
Million one, million two.
Because we were charging things to Title II that should not have been charged to Title II. We shifted. And then we know this year, we're dealing with issues associated with Title I. Now, I would like to think that those hits that we took last year and that we're dealing with now has some impact in here. I would like for, whether it's the six fifty that we just talked about with the non-SOQ positions, or I was going back and looking at my notes from last year. And last year, I sent out this memo and pulled up this twenty-twelve survey from the MetLife Teacher Survey, and they talked about job dissatisfaction, different data and research. I like if there's some way that you all can go back and have some type of discussion amongst your team. If there's some way that, whether it's voluntary contribution or you gave us last week, looking at estimated cost salary increases at different levels, if, if a group got one percent versus two percent. We need to take care of these children. And we've unfortunately had some situations where our most vulnerable children are being impacted the most by nothing that they did and nothing that the teachers did that I'm aware of. I'd like for you all to go back and see if you can find, if the board is willing, find some other way to address some of these cuts that we're talking about that's going to impact what we just talked about. Or come back and say that we're going to have the courage, as Ms. Doyle just said, to just ask, ask for it again. But I think that the situation we had last year and the situation that we had this year is impacting ratios, services, professional development, and so forth. And I don't think it should fall on the children.
So, I think in this regard, we're kind of moving the discussion toward action now. Now, we need to be very, very clear and speak as a board, you know, as we ask Sam and his team to go back and make some adjustments, reconsider some things. So, for, for clarity, on the ten positions, of course, that are only identified, eight among the math and reading specialists and Ms. Doyle is, you know, really ask that there be a reconsideration of that. I don't know that there are, you know, additional ten non-funded, non-SOQ funded positions that, you know, they would be able to identify. However, that being the case, we would certainly have to then write this six-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars, you know, into the gap unless some other cost-saving measure was to be found. So, let me ask now, just consensus-wise, just on those ten positions alone, are we asking that the administration reconsider that particular cost-saving approach?
You mean holding those harmless?
Yes.
In any cuts?
Yes. Those, I'm talking to those ten.
Yes. I got you.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
So, if I'm hearing you, understanding you correctly, then we, we will hold firm on, on, on the full slate of eighty.
Right.
And which would, what we'll do is add that six fifty to the current gap.
Yeah, right, right.
But, yeah, just say.
I do, sorry, I do like the way that Ms. Campson explained how the need was agreed upon as to how the distribution of the specialists were taken into consideration. Because we did at the beginning just say, one math, one reading specialist for each school. But I do think that it's important for us to at least work through where are the needs the highest? And if it does mean redistributing them because we have them and because we know how important and valuable they are, because I believe at one of your first presentation to us, you said what matters is the teacher in the classroom, the body that's directly working with the child, that we take that into consideration.
Can I also just ask, perhaps that under the expenditure-based budget, while I know we are extraordinarily challenged with our facility maintenance, no question. We've never been able to fund enough, I get it. And we have here five hundred thousand. Is there any way that we could take that out of the expenditure-based budget, identify what those repairs and maintenance needs are, and ask for supplemental appropriations for those? One-time supplemental appropriations?
I think from a process standpoint, working with the city manager, we could figure out if there's a way to formally make that request. So, I guess the short answer is yes.
So, there's a five hundred thousand built in to the expenditure-based budget for facility maintenance improvements, which is trying to get back, trying to make whole the facility and maintenance budget that has been depleted over the years. Is there a way that we can take that out of the base budget, identify what that is for next year, and request supplemental appropriations, one-time only, to meet those needs?
In the fall or at some point in the first quarter.
Exactly.
Again, conversation with city managers, see, process-wise, is that something they would entertain?
I say, to finish that sentence, in order to allow the accommodations to be prepared, right?
Right. And that would-
So, the ten for the position.
I mean, that would help offset that by all means.
Offset a part of that six fifty, which is-
Correct. But it's just another way to approach the five hundred for one time.
Yeah, I think rather you made reference to, is that the compensation increase that you referenced? Are we using it as an example or specific? Or did you reference that? I thought you did.
Yeah, I used it as an example of information that we've gotten that maybe if it's reconsidered, might be a source of balancing. So, so last, last, last meeting, Dr. Thornton gave us a chart that showed what if we did one percent versus two percent. I'm supportive of the two percent for our teachers and principals. And I know it's, I know, that's what I say, it's a, and I know it's difficult to differentiate, because we have excellent people at all, at all levels. I'm not the expert in it, I'm asking y'all to go figure it out. But we, we, we lost some money that we could have used. And, and from best I can tell, I'm, like I said, I'm making the assumption that somewhere in here, that is, those are resources that could have been used to make this thing a little bit better. Maybe not a lot better in the large picture things, but a little bit better. I'm asking to consider that there are some other ways that we can make sure that all the great things that you all want to support in the classroom, we, we do. Or at least, as I said before, if some things are buried in these balancing strategies, that we at least articulate that if we really wanted to give the picture of what we need in order to have the continued success or exponential success with the teaching and learning in the classroom, that we just define it and say it and, and have a community conversation around it and fight for it. I just still feel like we, we know we don't have enough money. We know that the state hasn't done all that it's supposed to do. We know that the council can only provide so much. But I feel like we just still aren't having the honest discussion about where we need from a equity perspective, what we need to attract and retain teachers and families and staff, and, and how we're going to leapfrog ahead. I like the incremental progress, I want us to leapfrog. I want y'all to tell me, what does it take to leapfrog?
So, if I might just, under this section, expenditure reduction balancing strategies. If we look at the original proposal, it was a total of nine-point-one million. Of that nine-point-one million, going back to the top, three million was considered CTI care for, for one-time related things. And then you look at the other items, attrition, of course, Mr. Jordan was clear in his concerns about why we have that and what can we do to avoid having that through retention and some other things. But I guess my point is, of that nine million, the things that unfortunately one could argue have a direct impact on teaching and learning, classroom instruction, in terms of reducing what we're currently doing, or at least resources towards it, it's a total, and I'm not minimizing it, but it's a total of one-point-four million. Now, that one-point-four million equates to twenty-two positions that could either be redirected for some other purpose to support teaching and learning. But of the nine million, one-point-four million of it is directly related to people who touch kids every day in some- one point four million of it is directly related to people who touch kids every day in some form or fashion.
You're the expert, so I'm in no position to disagree with you. But I want to challenge you to say that I still believe that inside of turnover and attrition, that that there's some impact there, I'm asking you to qualify it for.
Right, and I and and as I said.
Okay.
Retention strategies aside, hearing your point, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
In the end, when we get closer to this to the figure and the city tells us what, I want to make sure that we cooperate with the state and Hujani as they try to make teacher salaries better, whatever that bottom line figure. And it doesn't neatly fit into one and a half percent, one or two. It it may be a figure of, you know, one point nine eight, or one point six seven, or whatever. In the end, the bottom line, that's going to be a critical figure for me, whatever that is. And I think by that time, you will know of all the other possible shenanigans at the state level and some indication of the federal level uh to give us that figure. Just know that if there is something sacred, that's it. And the second sacred thing for me is to know if there's more time, either more Saturday schools, more after schools for those most needy schools. But that can be explained to me, uh and how are you going to use title funds, how are you going to use granted funds? How are you going to add more time in a day, you know, that can be explained to me, not in this kind of report. But the other figure is to me critical, Dr. Houston, as we look at what's sacred. The state has done something unusual, hadn't done it in the past handful of years to be helpful to us, and I'd like to cooperate with them during our part.
Okay, so um we have forty-five minutes designated for budget discussion next week with the intent to vote on the budget in next week's business meeting with a March twenty-fifth placeholder. If we don't get there. We started this conversation with a four point five million dollar gap. And uh the one adjustment that we have agreed to that we are asking to be made to the ten positions, which drives the gap up to about five point one, five point two, uh maybe less. Yep, supplemental uh one time uh uh support could be given for the maintenance improvement. That's where we stand right now. Other some other areas, and I and I do appreciate what has generally been stated, Rodney, and uh according with regards specifically to Rodney's term leapfrogging, making sure that we're able to make progress in specific areas um um next year. The only other thing I would ask right now, and we need to end this meeting with according to your image with clear priorities, and two, with clear instructions to the administration, what we'd like them to to do differently uh between now and our discussion next week. So let's go to the matter of priorities. Now, um I've I've had several conversations with superintendent with regards to the budget. And uh with the same questions, just in different words, that does this budget enable us to meet the needs uh of uh next year according to the strategic plan? And he said it at his table, again, that he feels that it does. Now, I'm not saying it can't be strengthened, I'm not saying that at all. But I am saying that 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 question has been raised, that consideration has gone in into um this work. Having said that, are there specific priorities, one or two or three of them, because there are, that we want to make sure are met as we move towards now what we would ask for in addition to uh more money, but obviously we will be asking for more than uh what has been given.
I stayed in mind, I'll restate them. Critical that we support the state and what they're doing for teachers' salaries.
Sure.
And for me, individualized since next week is the drop dead date. It needs to occur, Dr. King needs to designate some designate somebody to show me where we're getting more time, either the title funds or all the manual possibilities that I I showed out there before next vote. Otherwise, I can't vote in favor of a budget that doesn't show me how we're providing more time for our most needy students.
And and.
And that could happen from a designate from Dr. King's.
Sure.
And if that's not possible, then what I'm going to need as a priority is is a figure that needs to go in our budget to ask the city for more money for that reason.
But for more time?
Yes.
What do you what do you mean when you say support the states action in this regard, budget wise?
The state.
Other other.
State funding is contingent upon a one point five percent salary increase.
Right.
For SOQ funded positions effective August. So we we have to come, we have to certify in June that we're going to do that.
Right, and so if it's went down to one point.
Then.
One percent.
Right.
SOQ funded positions.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Yes.
I'll be very clear in terms of my priorities that should be in the base budget. The two percent increase, the bus drivers in attendance, absolutely. I think we have to do the school nursing staffing plan, I don't believe that's even an option, at this point we have to do that. The strategic plan transformation initiatives, absolutely. And when I said the two percent increase, come coming with that, of course, is the residual um figures as it relates to employee benefits and health insurance. So for me, those are sacred that we need to focus on as priorities. And we can put those in a priority order, but those are my priorities based on what I think should still be included in the base budget. Should we be asking for additional funding?
Others?
Just my question, didn't the two percent increase included in this budget?
Right.
It wasn't taken out?
It was not, no, but I'm just saying.
Right, so we're we're at five point two million gap because of the reintroduction of reintroduction of those ten.
That's correct.
Ten positions, just to make sure I'm clear, okay.
Well, it's actually because we're going to eliminate the facility maintenance to offset the six fifty on the.
Right.
On SOQ, so it's really going to be probably similar to the neighborhood of five point seven, I'm sorry, four point seven.
But is that elimination contingent upon getting a supplemental? I mean, that's.
That's a conversation you need to have with the city in identifying what those facility maintenance needs are and do they qualify as one-time supplemental opportunities?
And I don't know for sure if that can have, if that conversation can take place by the time the board acts, I think we would have to decide if we want to take it out now. And if, in fact, we get supplemental, this would be a priority, the maintenance and facility and facility maintenance if we're looking at an adoption by March twenty-fifth, I just don't know if.
So it works added into the gap right now.
Yeah. So reflected in the gap or pull it out?
Excuse me, and Brad, you just, Dr. Robinson, you weren't quite here, I think, when I explained that while I acknowledge the depletion of facility maintenance, we have dire needs, absolutely. But could there be one time facility maintenance needs a total of five hundred that we could do next year in cooperation with the city for them funding them outside of this budget? That was my statement.
Okay, I'm fine.
But the timing of addressing that question with the city administration and the board's need to make a decision on this budget possibly wouldn't line up, so the board would have to decide, do we want to take it out now? And if, in fact, that can happen, I'm not sure if it can, then that will be a priority for that supplemental appropriation, if, in fact, such can take place. I'm being very.
Right.
Clinical here because I don't want to.
It may not have.
Give any impression that the city rubber stamp that or support it.
Okay, all right, talking about priorities, now any others? No, have have whoever's ready to speak.
Okay, um as far as what's presented here on the paper, I do agree with at least the compensation for our teachers and principals, two percent increase, as well as their retirement benefits to support that.
You said teachers and principals.
Right.
This is our statement.
Well, I would I would say that um in putting everything on the table and looking at the budget critically and looking at all of our options, I do think in order to be competitive with the folks that directly interact with the students in the classroom, that we should at least consider the two percent raises for the teachers, okay, and the principals. And understanding clearly that the ones that we were considering at the higher level do have impact on the students, I I understand that.
I guess what I'm trying to, go ahead.
I'll just say that we would need, if we decided to, if the board decided to differentiate.
Right.
Teachers and principals from any other category. There's there are SOQ positions other than teachers and principals. So we would have to check with the state to see what the implications would be on the state funding if we decided to do something other than a one point five for positions that are SOQ, but not principal or teacher positions. Does that make sense?
With all due respect, uh you know, to what you, a couple of you have offered with regards to any differentiation as relating to, I would I would ask us at this point, that we not tamper with that, that's just me, you know.
Well.
But but go ahead.
Our bus drivers in attendance, their compensation, agree with wholeheartedly. Full support of the strategic plan, transformation initiatives, and anything that would be inclusive of our the transformation initiative, Lakewood Academy, Camp Estella, the five new schools that are being built, and anything to support their academic programming, whatever it might be that comes up, I would support that.
So let me let me rephrase the question then. Now, I mean, really, because because we're going to have to be really clear on on two things. One, what we're asking, you know, the administration to go back and do if anything differently in terms of adjustments. And then, two, what are we planning to look at next week? Because we'll be coming back looking at something next week. So let me let me rephrase the question so that we're real clear. If there's anything that's not in here, that 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 someone feels should be in, that's that's one thing.
I've only stated mine, you have.
And then the other thing would be, as 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 you started and as Courtney did, some things that are here that you're saying, whatever we do, let's not remove this.
Okay.
And then we want to make sure that that we all agree on, whatever that is, so that, again, we're speaking with one voice, if it's whether it's, you know, four of us or or seven of us. And really clear on, when we come back around to stable next week, what we're going to be looking at to make our decision in terms of what we're going to ask for.
Okay.
As we present our budget.
So I I I got my train of thought back. So uh we have not had a presentation on pre-K, okay? We had part of a presentation last week with regards to the grant. And uh part of that presentation alluded to the fact that we have to retrofit some of our classrooms.
Right.
In order to accommodate the students that we will be taking off of the waiting list for the to to fulfill the grant. So I want to make sure that we have funds for that.
Okay, is that being taken into consideration with the budget at all?
Uh at this point, no. Other than the half a million dollar facility improvement, I mean, we would have to get it out of that if that stayed. But at this point, no, there's no initial, no no additional funding in here for.
So.
That.
Has the cost already been determined, what what that what's, that's a good point, a thought. Now, and Ms. Captain, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, along that line, um I think that the grant figure equated to being able to add, I think it was around eight additional spaces.
This is adding the grant, this is the new, the new grant is adding ten additional pre-K for classrooms. It does not include capital or the improvements to the facilities. It provides furnishing of facilities, but not to uh any upgrades that we could need in those rooms.
So what would, you know, with that said, you know, one would have to consider as to whether the board is asking us to calculate. Right. The necessary dollar amount that would get us to the total ten to bring on those or look at where we are already ready and prepared without additional facilities changes.
Some of the questions that are that are looking at, we're looking at, may already be ready.
Right.
If the majority are going to need a little bit of retrofitting.
So we haven't identified the facilities for sure yet, or?
We're in the process of doing it, tentatively, there's some already located. I have not been back with um Ms. Wallston, who I think is uh to to clarify where she is with that. We sent out another a another request to principals just last week, responding back, looking for specs.
And then along those lines, we never heard from legal whether or not we are able to take on students who do not qualify on our current waitlist. And if we are going to be considering retrofitting classrooms, if we start some type of initiative to look at opening up pre-K for those students who do not qualify and we're buying items in bulk, just like we're thinking of doing with our five schools and or four schools in construction, you know, maybe now it's a little bit of an expense, but in the long haul, it might be worth um putting the investment in. So I would like to hear what the legal responses to whether or not we can, oh, yes.
We did get a response from legal.
Okay.
But uh you you were involved in that conversation, so you wanted to articulate that.
Right, we we didn't get to it.
Mister Cloud was here, I hate to put words in his mouth because he did want to speak to it himself. But he, we did investigate, uh the pre-K for classrooms are funded with state funding, the IP grant, which is a matching for us. And it and the grant does read that it is for low socioeconomic children. Once again, I wish Mister Cloud was here, I hope I'm being totally accurate. But uh you cannot put, you cannot use, you cannot charge tuition for slots for students who do not qualify to the criteria for the grant. And in the board docs, that information should be in your board docs from last week, that listed all the criteria that's required.
Right, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to not offer a slot to a student who doesn't qualify. The students who qualify need that spot. What I'm saying is, in addition to what the grant is giving us, can we take some type of proactive approach to say, let's start with two classes and see how that goes? And and because the students that are coming in on our grant and the students that we already have coming into pre-K are going to be our students. So they're going to add to the ADM regardless. However, could we possibly attract new students who would maybe not consider North Public Schools as their first option and bring them into the system in order to help decrease the rates at which we're losing students? And then you look at three entry points, you look at your elementary school, your middle school, and your high school. In our elementary school, you get them in their pre-K years because that's where parents are making that decision, do I go private, do I go public? If they have a good private experience, they're likely to stay in private. If they have a good public experience, they're likely to give it a try. It's definitely better on the pocketbook, and in this economy right now, that's what speaks a lot to parents. Now, in the middle school years, we have Young Scholars Program, we're opening up four new schools with specialty programs. Camp Estella is going to be a K eight, and we have the Academy of Discovery, which is already getting applications, wonderful perception from applications from folks outside of our current student population. And then you have your high school entry point, your IB program, your Leadership Academy, your arts program, et cetera. So what I'm trying to do is work it at both ends. I know that we have exceptional needs, but what can we do to also attract and retain? So the pre-K discussion, which I know we weren't able to have, and Mister Cloud was here, I would just like to hear something.
Sure.
Can we do this? What are our options, and if we need to put it into the budget? And if it's not considered this year, fine, but at least let's start the discussion and try to formulate some initiatives for that. Would you like me to?
Oh, first of all, I agree. I I would love to have pre- pre-K, I mean, the sooner we can get them happy, I am. And I also agree with your um uh suggestion that it would attract more parents, absolutely. And that's why the the school district has so actively pursued grant money to to get as many children in as we can. The grant money, of course, that you can get is always geared toward the low socioeconomic children, of which we have so many who desperately need it and in all of whom we're not able to get in, we have long waiting lists, which are also in this document, say. So it it appears to me that what you're saying is that we would open a couple of classroom, uh pre-K classrooms that were open to anyone, that would be locally funded.
She's looking at charging tuition.
Oh, yeah, you can charge tuition. Actually, I did leave that out.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Right, actually, I said you can even charge.
Mr. Cloud also investigated that. And, and, but I would have to have him speak to it, because I asked him to cover all the different things that I tried to imagine, not trying to get inside of your head or anything. But I was trying to imagine what, what, once it was pretty, and I was pretty sure that that was, be the answer, that we could not do it in those classrooms. I said, what else could we do? And he did explore that. He didn't give it to me in detail. And so I'm sure we can have him back to, to address that. But I, as I recall, and once again, I hope he's not going to come after me for speaking in his place, that, that he was looking to see, does anyone else, do any other public schools in the state have a model in which they basically set up kind of like a little private? It would be kind of a private situation. And I think he did find a couple of examples. So he'll be able to share those with us. Hopefully, maybe next week, if there's, I don't know how the time will be with the budget. But I will, and actually, he called me while we were here, but I declined his call. And it may be having something to do with that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Maybe he, yeah, maybe he's watching.
And I need some help here.
Wave your hand.
So, so, so I, I'm not sure, just practically speaking, if the matter, even if we were able to, if we would have budget implications for, for this budget. Now, obviously, I don't know how soon, let's, let's say it's legal, one, and then, two, we were able to implement a plan to, to begin, and I'm just not sure that it would have implications for this particular budget. And, uh, and while certainly I think we should actively pursue the information, as you have requested, I, I, I wouldn't hold up this budget.
Well, we at least need to make sure that we can pay for and budget for the classes that might be needed and retrofitted for the grant that we have right now, at, at the very least.
Oh, I agree. Yes, yes, yes. And, uh, and, and that cost has been, has been identified?
In the CIP.
Right. And, uh...
But that was preliminary. Until the spaces are actually identified,
Right.
then we'll know the actual, we can refine the estimate that was based on.
Okay.
Not knowing the exact location.
Okay. We, we have priorities, and we, we, we're moving toward closing. Did you have some?
No, go ahead, just, just go ahead.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to guide.
I know, go ahead.
Yes, there.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear. Are you asking for priorities in the face of the remaining budget deficit? And the idea being that, you know, if we are not able to get the 4.5 million dollars that we need
Right.
to close the budget, that, that these things that are in the base budget, which, which would be priority with the view that something is going to have to be cut?
Sure. So, so the latter, yes. That if there's, uh, the items here in the expenditure-based budget, that, that we feel, whatever happens, we need to be sure that we keep and fund this.
Right.
And, and then if there are items that we don't see here that we believe are essential to our success for next year, that you want to make mention of those. Then, again, I'm gonna make sure that we have board support for it either way. So that, again, we're, we're moving to our next step as a board, not just as individuals.
So, so in view of that, 4.5 million dollar deficit, my priorities would be, number one, the 2% compensation for teachers and staff. Number two, the employee health insurance premium increase. Number three, the strategic plan initiative. And then, number four, the transportation compensation initiative for bus drivers and attendants.
Okay. Okay. Sam?
I, uh, wanted to attempt to recap what I think I heard.
Okay.
To ensure that, um, these items have full support from the board. And if I'm understanding correctly, these items would be items that the board is asking us as we review and bring the budget back next week, that we ensure that we don't cut.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, so, um, I'm showing eight items. One is centers on more time, how we're getting to more time.
It appears to be I'm the only one emphasizing that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just naming them. Yeah, I'm, I'm naming them, and then I want, then, then you can tell me whether it has the majority or full support of the board or not. So I heard more time, and how, yeah, more time. So, and I, and I also heard the 2% raise in addition to supporting the bus drivers and, and bus attendants. Now, I, now I heard, I don't, I'm not so sure about, you're gonna have to give us some clarity on the 2%, because what we have right now is 2% across the board, and I heard different things about that.
Right.
But now what we have is 2% across the board.
Yes.
So you'll, you'll, you'll let us know.
We, we are supportive of that.
Okay. And next I have the strategic plan. I also have, uh, transformation initiative support, employee health benefit support. I made a note on pre-K, uh, non-waitlist and, uh, tuition implications. And I need to know where, what that means in terms of what the board wants. With the pre-K and tuition, non-waitlist items. If you are asking us to review that.
You're, you're talking about the ones that, that, that don't qualify? The tuition-based group, is, is that what you're referring to?
The she mentioned, yeah, I need to know where the board is.
Okay, yeah, and, 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 and I think there's a lot of information that we would need to get on that.
Right, right.
You know, to be able to make a decision on that.
Yeah, and I have a question mark about it. So, and the last item centers on an estimate for pre-K retrofit that's connected to the grant.
Right.
So.
There is actually one more, if you don't mind, that's the school nurses. Do we really have an option on that? Let's be frank. I don't know that we have an option.
This would give us a one nurse per location. We would finish that, one per location RN. That doesn't necessarily mean that the state requires one RN for every location. But the idea is that for, for service level, we want a model that shows at a minimum one per location. Does the state say you have to have one RN at every school? No.
That is, that is a significant difference. It doesn't, that's, that's a local decision, but that's a significant difference.
But, but I think that...
Financially and everything else.
But I think that Dr. Earl Lanza, her team would, would advocate that we have, we need at least one because of the number of students that we service. And the, some of the needs that they bring to us.
And what is the state requirement?
I'll have, I'll have to check, I don't...
I think you're thinking of the ITR teams that we are, that we need to fund. That's, that's where we're out of bounds. We need to figure out how to get those onboard. That's where we need to, that we're out of compliance with the state.
I understand that, that we've been out of compliance for years now, as a result of the reductions, right? But as we have now taken on the nursing program at full, that's where I feel like we need to fully support it based on the population severity and acuity and population size.
Yeah, and that's a safety issue.
But it's not because of the state.
Oh, I know, I understand that.
Okay, so those eight things, that's having us noted, and that we are adding the nurses piece. Are we saying we want to make sure that we keep it at the rate that it is here in the, in the budget? Is that what I'm hearing? From you, Courtney?
Yes.
And then are we in agreement with that? We want to try to the best of our abilities to have one at every school as listed here? Okay.
And now we're talking about what Dr. King will bring to us and that we would carry to the city. In the end, when the city comes back to us, I think, I just want to leave open the possibility of us making other decisions with 2% versus what the state says we need. There may be some realities we have to face when the city comes back to us. Particularly also in regards to the nurses situation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this matter? So we have 45 minutes currently designated for budget discussion for next week, for the placeholder for the 25th, after unable to reach a decision and vote on the budget next week. And then on the 25th, if, if we have to come back, we would have to discuss and vote, because we, we have to submit the budget to the city by April 1st. Okay? Another, uh, quick item, uh, on the, on the, on the, on the school board, um, budget. Thank you. I can keep one for myself. But this is just the contract for, uh, the continued, uh, VSB-A, uh, NSBA slash Q partnership for training. I know, uh, currently, the contract is for six, uh, training opportunities. Thank you, Gina. And I know Brad had mentioned, I believe it was last week, when, last time we discussed this, uh, he thought we don't need as many, or, or, you know, six, you would see four, day and a half, and then two six-hour training sessions.
And then we can talk on top of it, or, I'll wait to discuss that.
Yeah, so, so, with, just, then this is a fairly simple one. Do we, one, want to continue the service agreement with them? We see the cost of a service of $20,000, it's the same that it was this year, it has not gone up. And, um, this may be an opportunity for me to mention the grant. Actually, I would ask, if you may, if I may, I'd prefer someone to mention the grants that, that may be available.
Okay. Um, I received a call from a representative of the Virginia Department of Education who said that, um, there is a potential grant opportunity available to provide support for school board training as it relates to the MOUs for the denied schools. And so, um, I reached out to Dr. Houston to see if that would be something that you would be interested in. And he asked me to explore that option, so I have done so.
Okay. And I think it could be applied to this, to this cost. So the first question before us, from, for me, is, do we want to continue this service agreement next year? Number one.
I understand this, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Okay. Do we want to consider it as, pursue it as, uh, proposed to us with the six opportunities? Four for a day and a half, and then, uh, two of them six-hour training sessions? Or do we want to modify that in some way?
I understand it and support it as presented.
Okay. Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I think we should modify it, because the, 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 quite frankly, the, the time commitment is, is the challenge. They're asking us to go to the trainings up in Charlottesville, as well as the VSB-A convention, the Hot Topic, the legislative conferences. I can't, I can't do it all.
And that, that's, that's totally up to us. I, I will offer this, what the potential changes that can happen to this board in June. I, I think all of the support that the board could receive would be useful, especially in this regard. And for me, this is more important and beneficial than those conferences. I mean, Hot Topics, that's fine, the convention, but this is customized and specifically designed for this governance leadership team's needs. And so that's, you know, my sentiment ahead.
Trying to build on what Dr. Robinson just stated, we could negotiate to have that, uh, those one and a half, two one and a half hour, two one and a day and a half sessions at a different location.
The challenge I find, Warren, is that I gotta take time off of my patients. I, I lose money every time I, I have to go to one of these conferences. And this is something every two months. And then one other thing, I can't go to my professional confer, I miss my, I'm, I'm behind on my CEU credits. That's, that's why I'm saying that from a, from a board member's standpoint, that the time commitment is, is getting out of hand.
I think we could save some time, though, if we don't travel all the way to...
Some time, but still, I gotta be away from my office and away from my patients. So I, I, you know, I guess, I guess my decision is gonna have...
Pardon me? I guess we could do one or two of them in your office.
Dr. Houston, is it possible, is it, is it possible to...
It's time to swear.
Is it...
Go ahead, man.
Is it possible to change the agreement so that we could have at least one board member who would not be in attendance as opposed to not be able to have the training without the whole board?
So, again, that's what they, they don't, and, you know, they, they...
Because it was my understanding that we had to have that...
That they will not do it without everybody.
Right.
Yeah, I, I've never heard that stated, and it certainly, it isn't listed here. I understand why that's important, both to them as it should be to us. Because you can imagine, you know, when you have one person missing from that, that, you, you're talking about being out of a line there.
Like, for instance, when, um, Dr. Robinson here has said that, you know, there are times where it's just, he's got to be missing.
Right.
And we know, and, you know, others have had that same situation.
Sure, sure.
So perhaps the agreement should be that, you know, we would, maybe one board member might not be at every board, you know.
That's always the problem.
So, that way we can, can, we can carry on with this, and we give board members a flexibility.
So, so what I'm asking for, even if we don't make a decision today, is that you tell me how you want me to execute this. I would be signing off on it, you know, uh, and, yes. And, uh, of course, um, you know, Gina and Deborah would need to know, uh, uh, how to plan. And so whether, again, whether we reduce it to, you know, four rather than six. It's up to us as a board.
Um, I support this. I would just say that we give ourselves the option of saying Charlottesville or Norfolk. That might, that would, that would help out with, with travel and time and things like that. So it could, because right now, as written, it does say, um, two six-hour training sessions to be scheduled, et cetera, in Charlottesville. So I would just say that we just give ourselves the option of doing it here or doing it there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think that if we're gonna, if we're looking at costs, then we should allow it to, to stay in Charlottesville, because it's gonna cost more for them to come here. Would that not be correct?
No, it costs more when we go there.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Right, it doesn't include that.
Okay, yes.
I do support this as well. I think it's important for our board development, and in light of potential board turnover, it's important that we give our future board an opportunity for training.
Okay. So we, we definitely need to make a decision next Wednesday.
I do think it could be, it's very clear, in my opinion, for Dr. Robinson's case, any board member that can't go to any one of these things, they understand, guaranteed.
It's not ideal, though.
Not ideal, but guess what? We all have lives and jobs first, families first.
Okay, so I am gonna ask us to vote on this matter next Wednesday. Okay? All right? The only last thing is, we, we do have agenda planning in the, in the, in the morning. I do have the agenda for, um, the 18th as it stands now.
The other thing that we will need to do as a board is to look at what we were not able to cover on March 4th and migrate those topics onto our April 1.
They are, they are, I mean...
Okay. So we'll just need to discuss that further tomorrow.
Okay. And so just, uh, you know, with a quick overview, and I'll give you a chance to look it over and just ask if there are any recommendations. I'm not gonna walk through it item by item, but just as you look it over, um, if, if there are any thoughts, yes.
In regards to 5.04, I do fear that there are some items that have been omitted that need to be thought about. And, you know, I could, I could enumerate them, but you know what I'm talking about. There's several items that, that the CIP needs to have. I could, I could vote for it as is, but I'm probably gonna make the disclaimer that there are items that are under consideration that may occur between now and, and June that, that will need to be added as critical items.
So you might support with comment?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think I have to do that. I have to at least go on record as saying there are items, critical items, that need to, need to be decided that, that should be considered in the CIP. But I will vote in favor of it.
Okay. With you. Any other comments? I will say, now, as we plan tomorrow, and, and look at this again, and we will look at it again tomorrow, you know, that, that could be, you know, amount of change to it based on what the administration may bring forward or some new consideration. I don't, I don't, I don't envision any major change. But please make note of the fact that we are gonna start with the personnel and student support matters at 2:00 PM. The reason for that adjustment is so that once we start with opening the formal public business, we go right on through the evening, and we don't, you know, have a public meeting, then have to go in to close, and folks that may want to be here for it have to either wait around or go and come back. So that's why that adjustment was made. Either way, we would have been starting at that time, it's just a matter of about what, what business we would be taking care of. Okay? All right? Anything else for the good of the order? Yes? Dr. Stewart?
A high compliment to Dr. King and Dr. Thornton and all of colleagues. This is the first year that our state has not deserted you in the budget process. But every year, y'all have gotten better at better at helping us do better and better. Thank you for, for your great contribution in that area again this year. You've had a little more support than previously. I believe that the city will, will help us to all, to the level of all they can once again.
Thank you.
That's it.
Dr. Houston, I would like to think that, uh, I'm, I'm looking at this agenda, and, um, I'm thinking that we may need to start a little earlier. I'm not sure, we'll, we'll run into the same kinds of things that we've been running into in the last couple of meetings because I think that, um, you know, with these legal matters and other things that we'll be dealing with, that the timing on this stuff is going to probably be a little bit more than what we see here. So, when you do the agenda planning,
Yes.
you may want to consider that.
So I would ask now, um, this is a long day, but, uh, how many of us can come in a little earlier? And I acknowledge what you're offering, Eddie, you're absolutely right. Do we want to push it up, um, thirty minutes or an hour? And if so, how many of us can?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Brad?
I can.
You can? By one PM start, you could do? Okay.
For twelve PM, it's a tough
Okay, okay. And I was, okay.
You wanted to change it now to, uh?
I think, I, I would, I would not change it now, wait until the morning when we, you know, have opportunity to, to, you know, to discuss all that's before us and try to be respectful, you know, because I know it's a big sacrifice, and so I don't want to do it without serious consideration, knowing that we absolutely, absolutely need it. Okay? All right? Anything else, Sam? Okay.
Could I, can I say one thing?
Yes.
I do want to say a thank you to all of our principals and teachers who are going to be working extraordinarily hard between now and the end of the year to helping our children significantly improve their scores and to meet their potential. And I think that we can't thank them enough for all the work that we're, they're doing. And, and do know that we support you in those efforts. We support Dr. King and his efforts in helping them be successful in order to enable the children to be successful. And that should be our focus between now and the end of the year.
Thank you. All right, thank you. While we stand adjourned.